Call to order, the December 4th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. Terry, why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda, however the chair may refer subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Good morning. My name is Connor Nixon. I'm also have a cold, so excuse me. I'm the Secretary for Trinity Food and Foodservice, a nonprofit corporation made up of the Trinity Seven Food Pantries and Soup kitchens. We'd like to present a brief report concerning the Trinity County Food Bank, the storefront, and the improvements we have made and the needs that we have. Over the last two years, working together, we've tripled the amount of food coming into Trinity for those in need. Also, in the last two years, we have rebuilt the food bank by increasing the building size, a new 27-foot refrigerator freezer unit, a new zero-turn forklift, electric, because the other one was propane-powered and illegal to use inside the food bank, and increased shelving, and by that, we have made five-fold space increases in the food bank. We've also constructed the storefront to supply inexpensive, non-perishable food to the food pantries and soup kitchens. And over the last two years, we have sold the food pantries at our cost, $67,000 worth of food for those food pantries to serve the people in need. The total we've raised is $128,000 for those projects. We have also raised an additional $26,000 to augment the income of the Trinity County Food Bank Manager for one year. The manager's hours have risen from 60 hours a month to over 125 hours a month, but the income has remained the same. The manager was working well below the legal minimum wage laws with no benefits. The funds for this project will be exhausted in May of this coming year. The USDA has currently granted the Trinity County Food Bank $100,000 for infrastructure improvements, but not a dime for increase in personal pay. Earlier this year, the operating budget for our food bank was cut by 10% by USDA. This is our request to you. We are asking you to encourage the chief administrative officer to include in the preliminary budget for 2019, 2020, the position for Trinity County Food Bank Manager. Without your direction, he will not make those needed changes. Have other counties created such a position? I really don't know, but I'm going to find out. But other counties in Northern California and cities in Northern California do financially support their food bank in various ways, but Trinity needs to step up substantially to help our food bank. Can I go on? Because we haven't had a report in three years on the food bank. Thank you. I'll be brief. That's not your fault, because nobody has asked the board before to step up and help us. But now, we need your help. We need to join together in stabilizing our food bank by creating a permanent position. It is not important that other counties may or may not have taken this route. When we're on the bottom, we need to find new ways to help our people in our community. Today, we're asking you to encourage a chief administrative officer to include this position in preliminary budget for next year and give us a seat at the table when the other department gets wish to cut that position. We do not want a grant. Grants come and go. We want stability so that we can continue towards our goal that no one should go hungry in Trinity County.
Good morning, board and citizens. My name is Jeff England. Thank you for your time. I'm the executive director of the Trinity County Food Bank since October 1st, 2016. When I first started working, it was around 60 hours per month, and I was able to work a part-time job. Now, that's not possible with all the extra hours. Shortly after taking over, we were offered the Senior Brown Boxes, which is a supplement for seniors that are 60 years and older, that meet the minimum guideline income requirements, which is substantial for them. We've had quite a few seniors that have cried and just said, you know, how much it means to them. So, we love the program. We've had 350 people, seniors, sign up throughout the county, which has created a lot of extra hours. We have to bring two trucks to Shasta Nutrition in Redding to pick up boxes and then distribute to 16 different sites throughout the county. And then, we meet a Feed America truck in Redding every month and go to Anderson at least once a month to pick up food from the grocery outlet, which we just picked up. We've been trying to get more food coming into the county. My warehouse duties, including unload semi-trucks of USDA commodities, divide them onto separate pallets for each town site, load our trucks for deliveries and unload food at each site. We pack produce into separate boxes for each town site, load senior boxes in our truck for each site, ensure proper food storage, rotation, and inventory, maintain a warehouse cleanliness inside and out, break down all our cardboard boxes, recycle the county dump. We train our food bank employees on safety, proper food storage, and civil rights. We've expanded into areas that weren't served before. We started a site in Big Flat, Wildwood, which there's nothing out in Wildwood, no stores, nothing. And then, the Roderick Center in Hayport is a site for our senior boxes, and they're really loving it. And then, we've created a new user-friendly website with healthy recipes, public service announcements, a donation button, and it's trinitycountyfoodbank.org. It also has a schedule for all our different sites. We're trying to procure more food, which we did just pick up the grocery outlet in Anderson, which they gave us a substantial amount the first time we picked up. And also, when I first took over, our budget is $41,000. We have Cal Foods that donates, or gives us money to buy food grown in California. And we weren't able to do it because we had to spend the money from our budget, which is only $41,000 a year to cover everything. And I talked with FoodLink, and I said, hey, I said, you're dangling a carrot in front of us, but we don't have the money to buy this stuff to get reimbursed six or eight weeks later. So, FoodLink, who brings us our USDA commodities, agreed to pay for these items. This year, we had $37,000. We bought hamburger with and spaghetti sauce. Who will have it a little bit longer? Does that will pay more?
Go ahead.
I'm also a member of the Nutrition Action Program, which is with Health and Human Services and HRNs. I do tons of networking, as most of you see on Facebook. I meet with nonprofits, the Trinity Food Outreach storefront, so they can purchase food, which we'd like to absorb into the food bank in the near future. I spend numerous hours on the phone almost every day. I average two emergency food needs every week. I keep a constant contract with site managers, California Department of Social Services, FoodLink, Solana Conca Costa Food Bank, and Feed America. We also want to start a backpack program, which is weekend food for kids, where we can drop food off at the schools. They could fill the backpacks up to the kids that are in need. They don't get the free lunches during the weekend. And more nutritional education with Cal Press, Snap Bed, and Young Family Rent. And also, in the last, in the car fire and the Helena Fire, we utilize our trucks to go and pick up donated items, food, clothing, water, et cetera, without, just out of our one thing. We'd like to work, if I do get the county position, to work with the Ops Emergency Services so we can utilize our trucks and get the food out there and whatever is needed. We want to grow and meet the increasing food insecurity in our county. In closing, after one year of a one-time-only grant, which they gave me an increase in my wages, without this new position, I don't think I can continue. I make the $1,166 a month, which is on a 1099. So, I have to pay taxes on top of that, so I'm making about $6 an hour, working my butt off to feed Trinity County hungry. Thanks for your consideration.
Does anybody else want to talk on the food bank? Why don't we just try to do all the food banks, and then we'll move on to their stuff? Go ahead. So, the --
Good morning. I'm Renee Klutchka, and I work with the Weaverville Community Food Cupboard. I kind of work on the low end, you know? I see how everything comes together. And what I'm seeing is that we're serving more and more people. It's something we need to be aware of. These are not transients. These are people who are elderly, mentally ill, are single mothers, disabled, and we serve anywhere from 250 to 300 people a month, and this is increasing. And thankfully, we have the food bank to purchase food items from. To date, year-to-date, we've spent probably close to $4,000. We've taken in from donations of roughly $2,800. And what helps us so much is Jeff is, and the food bank continually thinks of us and donates food for us, along with many other places, but they probably contribute 25% of what we need. And the Food Cupboard has been in business probably for 35 years, and so, we have a long record of trends. And every month, we have people that are, more and more and more people that are coming. So, it's just invaluable to have people like Jeff and the food bank to continue serving us. And I know Jeff didn't mention, you know, when there's a blizzard, he has to drive clear to Hyon Palm, and he delivers food through all of this. I mean, he is dedicated. He works eight days a week, just like you, and we would really like, I would, and I know many people, would love to see this, him get paid for what he does so that we can continue with his services, and I thank you.
Good morning, all. White here, I'm a resident of Trinity County since 1950. I was about that tall. I've been in economic development, construction, et cetera, and so forth, for 65 years at least. And I've worked with Jeff and the food bank people, have helped find grant money and coordinate the construction on the first two projects we have finished. We've been on time, on budget. We have some fantastic contractors in the county that have contributed heavily, and suppliers. And we're currently working on another $100,000, whatever you want to call it, contribution. And we're going to do another little expansion to further make things more efficient for Jeff and the rest of the crew to keep the thing going. So, with that, I would just like to say that Jeff's been doing an excellent job. He's a good communicator. And like I say, I grew up here. I worked for a Chinese fellow since I was 13, and he had this philosophy, if you take some and you leave some, and you give back to the community. And I think most of us here, I know what you guys get paid, so I know you're giving back. And I think it's a very, very worthwhile thing when you look at the economic level of Trinity County people, how much it costs for a powder bill, or rent, et cetera. And we're putting out some good food and good service, and thank you all for your service.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on the food bank? Before we move on, I'll ask the board, do we want to give direction to the CAO in any form at this time?
Yes.
And that direction would be?
To put this on a preliminary budget to staff Jeff for the Trinity Food Bank.
Would you like, would you like a budget beyond just the staff? Or for, because I'm not sure if we're asking to stick to the entire operation, the cost of fuel. I mean, we already pay the cost of fuel, and we have the, in the building is the county's. But is there, I mean, do you want a complete department budget or just a staffing budget?
Bobby, if I may, can we just give them a little more general?
Yeah.
And to have them look at the program and see what the county --
It's the chair's budget.
Right.
Could I say something?
No.
Okay.
Is there any disagreement?
No, absolutely not. I'd like it to be fairly broad and not, not too specific.
All right. Are you comfortable with, are you comfortable with that?
No. So, the cost of staffing or just the cost of?
The, what the county can do to help the program up to, you know?
Up to, okay, sure.
I have one comment, because I just happen to know. It is a family affair, and I think kudos to your wife. I know she's en route now to Zinnia in this weather, and I know it takes a toll on both of you. So, an appreciation from the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, and your wife.
You're welcome. Okay, with that, we'll move on to more public comment.
My name is Terry Nagel from Hayford and Food Bank. Jeff, good job. I've been watching you. Anyway, it's been a short while since we last got together, and, you know?
I'll see you on Friday.
During Thanksgiving, I was very thankful for you keep stepping forward and initiating conversation between people who have job descriptions that mean something and can take care of situations that they find they need to. And I do thank God that things are in motion, and there is a little bit of movement in this constipated department of Trinity County. The thing is, is I looked at my emails that go to Richard all the way back from the 12th of September, and the first paragraph just starts off, "Have you decided," you know, to get back to me about my use of my trailer for non-food purposes? Being very clear, I think I was clear with you, Margaret, and everyone in the meeting we had, that it was merely a sign. No one's using it. So, no one gave Christie the memo. She came Thursday night, and she stole it. She's, she, she gets things in her head, and then she imagines them to be true, but she fails to do any late work to see if it's actually real. And in the video, if you haven't seen it, I, I'm dressed in my hairnet, my hat, my apron, my sanitary gloves. I came out of the restaurant making pizzas to see what's going on, and she's stealing it. And I said to her, if, if I open this up, and it's clear to you that there's no possible way I'm using this, are you still going to take it? She said, yes. So, it's at that point that is stealing, because she is authorized to take it if I was continuing to use it, and she had shut it down. Here's the bottom line, real simple. She shows up on July 27th. She shuts me down in 15 minutes, the very same person who gave me the permit to be in operation. So, there's no, no anything, even Richard said she's not giving you any solutions or anything. So, that's the 27th. I go to Richard before Labor Day, me and my wife, we discuss things. I left that meeting saying, there's two things I need. I need Christie not to show up and hit me, and I need to know my trailer's safe. This goes, the bell's going to ring. I don't like that thing. So, it's like this. She took it, four people above her pay grade in a meeting about the very subject. No one gave her a memo? The lady's out of control. She's putting you guys in a lot of vulnerability situation. I want the trailer back by Friday. Simple veritip. Never gave me the information that you asked them to give me. By Friday, have it back so that I'm not bringing the attorney for the next one for you guys to talk to, because it's getting, I'm trying to talk with you guys. I'm trying to work this out. And in the meantime, each and every day, I'm not being paid. I'm unable to work. I don't know what else I can do.
Okay, Terry. Thank you for sending the video link to me. So, I did watch it right away. We did, I had a discussion yesterday with the CAO, and there should be some sort of answer coming back to you. All right, any other public comment?
Good morning, board. My name's Larry Leonard from Hyon Palm. I'm here before the board today to express my assessment and concerns of the county's role in forest management policies regarding public lands. We have the Trinity County Fire State Council, which was formed around 1998 or so, is what I've read, and then the Trinity Collaborative more recently in 2013. Both groups have been given direction by the board and legitimacy. I feel that we need to reevaluate their respective roles and assess how well it's working for the county and your constituents. The county has basically outsourced the county's concerns to them. The Fire State Council has a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with the county and the other participants in that group. Their goal is to reduce the risk of catastrophic fire in Trinity County by establishing priorities for reducing risk of catastrophic fire on landscape-level scales in order to improve forest health, water quality, quantity, and community well-being. This is in their MOU, as well as the objectives, which is to undertake strategic planning to address and prioritize fire hazards in Trinity County, utilizing a locally-led planning process with all stakeholders based on a landscape-level analysis of risk factors and action priorities. And they are to focus efforts by aggressively pursuing prevention of catastrophic fire through vegetative management, prescribed burning, land use planning, and forest health. So, this is what the board has signed on to with the Fire State Council. The Trinity Collaborative was created using the three-legged stool approach that focuses on the economic, ecological, and social acceptance of potential projects. I believe the goals and objectives of the Fire State Council are the social acceptance of the three-legged stool approach. The Trinity Collaborative is no longer using that three-legged approach. The goals and objectives of the Fire State Council are not considered in the planning of projects by the collaborative. Here's why I feel the board needs to provide oversight and reassess the roles of these two groups. The safety element of the county general plan under S. 5.5, the objective of reducing potential fire activity through fuel reduction programs, the policy is, A, all agencies shall coordinate and cooperate with the objectives of the Trinity County Fire State Council to identify existing critical fire hazard areas and areas where new fuel breaks and fuel reduction projects should be developed to the extent feasible. So, here's the crux of the issue that I want to bring to your attention. The safety element of the general plan has been to be extended its effectiveness to foster comprehensive plans to be included in the Forest Service program of work has been rendered useless by the manner in which the Trinity Collaborative has taken over the role of providing projects to the Forest Service without collaborating with those that are promoting the goals and objectives of the Trinity County Fire State Council. The Trinity County Fire State Council is not being represented in the collaborative. I feel the board supervisors need to provide some oversight and direction concerning this problem, and I hope they would reassess the need to create and implement comprehensive planning and project prioritization based on many communities at risk in this county. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have public comment? With that, we'll move on. Consent count. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon by the board by one. Roll call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled separately. Bobby, do you have anything?
Yes, Chair. 1.5 and 1.8.
Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Mike?
No.
Supervisor Penley?
No.
Yeah. Anybody from public have anything they would like to call?
Item 1.1, please.
All right, nothing else. Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Long. Supervisor Mines?
Yes.
Supervisor Chalick?
Aye.
Supervisor Penley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris? Before we, yes, please. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay. Begging your pardon, Chair, I have in front of me two subsequent items that should have gone under consent. The first one is from CAO Coons, and the requested action is, move to discuss and/or take action to confirm existence of local health emergency due to hazardous unhealthy debris due to the car fire and find the need to take immediate action, to take this immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that without confirmation from the board by December 4th, 2018, the proclamation will expire, and the hazardous unhealthy debris due to the car fire will still exist. So, I'll make a motion to bring this forward.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, your second item.
And the second subsequent item, which is also from CAO Coons, requested action under consent, move to discuss and/or take action to confirm the continuance of local emergency in the county of Trinity due to the car fire and find the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency that is, the urgency is that without confirmation of the board by December 4th, 2018, the proclamation will expire. The need for continuing assistance from the California Disaster Assistance Act, or CDAA, and other state and federal resources will still exist. So, I'd like to make a motion to bring this forward to the board also. It is, was to be a consent item.
Okay. All in favor, signify. I say an aye.
Aye.
Yes, Ms. Long. So, we will have to hear these items separately?
No, they're brought under consent, so you can't hear them. It's one roll call item.
Okay.
Need a roll call.
So, do we have to make a motion to do that?
You do. You have to make a motion to the subsequent consent and calendar.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept a subsequent calendar as presented.
And are you rolling those together, sir?
It's a subsequent calendar as presented.
Okay. I'll second.
Thank you.
And I will note before I move forward that public didn't get the option to make a comment, so at this time, if the public has to make a comment on either one of these No, with that, we have a first and a second. Pass these two. Signify. Oh, this is roll call, excuse me. Supervisor Chalick?
Aye.
Supervisor Penley?
Yes.
Supervisor Mines?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Gross? Aye. All right, on to item 1.1. Prove a budget adjustment for fiscal year 1819 in the -- in the Auditor Court Remittance Department. Increase transfers in by 15,286. Approve budget adjustment for fiscal year 1819 and contributions to other funds departments. Increasing transfers out by 15,286. And approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 1819 in the Contingency General Fund. Decreasing appropriations for contingency by 15,286. Increase in general fund appropriations of 15,286. Current contingency general fund balance is $316,473. Yes.
Good morning, Chair. Apologies, this item should have been on county matters because it is contingency funds. And so we're, that's why I pulled it to bring it forward. Auditor noticed it late last night. Got it this morning. These funds have to be paid to the state on an annual basis, $122,232. And they are offset by fines and fees that are brought in. And the fines and fees collection, or at least a portion, a big portion of that was shifted over to the state back in July of '15. And since then, you can see from that chart there that the fines and fees have dropped quite a bit. Started to come back up. I think it's still a deficit. So what we don't collect up to $102,000 is an obligation of the general fund.
Okay. Questions?
Quick technical question. Who's collecting this forest? Of course. Thank you. Who used to collect it for us? Our collections department, probation. Probation, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Comments? Okay, does the public have any comments on this? With that, I'll bring it back.
Motion to approve item 1.1 from Auditor Controller is presented.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those, same time?
Aye.
It's a way to get moved up on that.
Never thought of that. That's good.
Other department heads, don't use this technique. Okay. Item 1.5, approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes of November 6th and special meeting minutes of November 9th and special meeting minutes of November 20th as submitted by the Deputy Clerk. Bobby?
Chair, I was not present on the November 20th, and this was bundled together. So in order to approve, I'd have to pull them apart because I wasn't present. That's all.
All right. No other comment? Does anybody from the audience have a comment? With that, we'll bring it back, and there's no problem in making a motion to approve the first two. And we'll do this third meeting as separate.
Thank you, sir.
So if somebody would like to do...
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve item 1.5 only using the November 6th, 2018 special meeting and the November 9th, 2018 special meeting minutes. Setting aside November 20th, 2018 for a separate item. As a separate item.
Okay. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, same time? All right, second part.
Like to make a motion to approve November 20, 2018 as I just pulled it from the 1.5 consent agenda item.
Second by Supervisor Morris. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those abstaining?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item 1.8, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 201819 in the Working Capital Motor Pool Department. Increasing transfers in by 49,163 and fixed assets by 108,000. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 1819 in the Cannabis Department, increasing transfers out by 49,163. No impact to general funds, $59,000 from Working Capital Motor Pool Fund and $49,163 from Cannabis Planning Fund. Current cash balance in Fund 803, which is the capital fund, is $216,543. And our current cash balance in the cannabis fund is $1,739,278. Bobby?
So Chair, my concern is I have asked on numerous occasions, both private and public, for a disclosure of the monies that are in the cannabis fund. And I would like to remind the full Board that in our ordinance and it says that the above fee amounts, and this has to do with the licensing of the cannabis, are not anticipated to fully cover the cost of administrating this ordinance. However, within 12 months of this ordinance, the county shall conduct a fee study to determine the total cost of administrating the ordinance. A, if based on the results of the fee study, the fee needs to be increased, the county may increase the fee by way of resolution for any new or renewal registrations. B, if based on the results of the fee study, the fee exceeds the cost of administration, administering the ordinance, the county shall decrease the fee by way of resolution and shall also reimburse the applicants for the proportional share of the overpayment. So my concern, sir, is that if we're utilizing these monies in other ways prior to the anticipated fee schedule report that was due in my knowledge last August, we will be caught short if we're underpaying our staff and we will be caught short if we are overcharging our clients. So I don't believe we should spend any of this cannabis money outside of what we've already declared in the ordinance until we have that report.
So you're asking to not fund code enforcement?
I'm asking for the fee schedule report budget to be finalized before we know whether or not we can take money from that prior to knowing whether or not we have overcharged the cannabis processing. I've heard it say that on more than one occasion, that we are not charging enough. So if we're taking money out of that and we're not charging enough, that leaves us short. That money has not been assessed with the report. And so how do we know what we can pay out of it? There's been no report.
But this, this money... I'm just trying to get it clear in my head, but you're, you're asking, this money is to go to... Well, this, this would be for compliance officer.
Yeah, and just the 59,000. The other two vehicles would be purchased out of Motor Pool, which the two departments that are purchasing the vehicle have been putting money into that. So it would just be the 59,000 for the, for the code enforcement is what would be charged to cannabis.
Code enforcement or compliance?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
For the officers, yeah, for officers. The other two vehicles would be paid out of funds that were generated by the departments themselves to put in the Motor Pool.
So Bobby, I guess you're asking, I just want to be clear. You're asking for us not to spend any more money until we get the fee study done?
That is correct.
So that would in fact just close the program down?
We, at the beginning, when the ordinance was passed, we told the people that were paying the fees that there would be an assessment done. We have not provided that assessment. And that money was, we were told, the Board and the public was told that the county cannot charge more than what it costs to provide the paperwork done. Period. There was no additional line items put into that budget. However, the Board has paid out for the SEQA type of information, and that's appropriate. On waiting for the fee schedule study, it was coming. It's still not here. And therefore, we're spending money. We don't know if it's going to be allocated as in the form of a refund to the cannabis licenses. Or if we're not getting enough, then we're going to not be able to pay the additional staff. So we don't have a priority list on that budget. And we do not have the fee schedule study. So how do we know how much money we can spend out of that budget? That's my concern.
Okay. Any, yeah, any other questions?
So Rick? If I'm reading this correctly, current fund for the cannabis department is 1.7 million? Is that, and the money coming out is a different fund, but still part of the 1.7 million?
No, this is, this is coming from the cannabis, the income that is collected in fees for the cannabis program as the action that is being funded is directly related to cannabis code enforcement.
I understand that. I'm just trying to verify that we're talking about the same. I'm, I'm reading this correctly. And that 216,000, is that included in the 1.7? Or is that a separate money out of that fund into a separate fund?
It's, it's a separate. 803 is the Working Capital Motor Pool Fund. So it's a, and a completely independent fund.
Thank you for that clarification.
John? Would that fund, or I guess I was under the impression this was coming out of fines and fees, maybe from 2016, a little bit 2017, which would go into the general fund or could be applied to the general fund?
No, this is coming from, the truck for the code enforcement officer is coming from cannabis. As it is a...
As it's supposed to, or it could come from a different...
As it, as it is supposed to, because that is a direct...
Mm-hmm, it's a direct working of, of the cannabis program and the ordinance, I understand.
And a question.
Okay.
Actually, what she talked about, probably a different thing for me, is she mentioned priority list. And that's where my question comes into play, is who makes the decision on the priority list? And who is making those decisions on what gets paid first? Or how this money is getting appropriated a little bit? Because I see that Mrs., I'm not against this, but it's just, in my view from listening to that was is that it seems like code enforcement is getting taken care of really quickly, but all the license holders aren't.
The decisions as far as priorities are made in your budget as budgetary actions. And so when we prepare the budget, we're essentially establishing what the priorities are for the upcoming year. And those, and the last go-around were primarily to enforcement. And I'm just hitting the big, big items. The upgrade of the building that, that we serve the public in. And the SEQA analysis that's being done by the consultant along with all those staff and other activities that are going on.
Okay, thanks. I just was trying to get an understanding of how the process was laying out, and so I just...
Yeah, and I, I would like to say that one of the unknowns that is more known now is the sheriff was not participating as much before as they are now. And we are going to quickly be able to have a much better handle on, on that budget and that part of what's going on.
Well, I, I think it's twofold here. I think that this is important too because as been mentioned before by previous Board members, where enforcement is what's going to make it possible for the regulated farmers to make it. So it's crucial that this happens. This isn't even a question of that. It's just, I also want to make sure on the other side of it that the people that are needing to get their licenses and getting everything out of the planning department, that the money's getting there, so the people are getting hired. So it's all, it's all good, just I just wanted an understanding of it.
An unsolicited opinion, yes, enforcement is our priority in cannabis as we've been developing the project. If there's anything that needs to be accelerated or concentrated on now that we have the working sheriff, we hope to have that greatly enhanced and brought forward.
Thanks, Chair.
And I will note that we, there is a fee study going because I know I had to fill out some forms and send in on my time, so. Here we are moving forward on that.
So no matter how worthy the cause is, and I'm not saying that this isn't a worthy cause, it's just that we pledged to the public that the fees were being based on what it costs the county to do the paperwork. Period. We have subsequently paid out things, worthy causes, for the cannabis department, including the SEQA that is being reviewed now and also the prior things. And that's all good and great. However, we still don't have any knowledge of where we sit on the feasibility fee schedule. So worthy causes, yes. But we told the public one thing. They've waited. It was August of 2017 that it was, should have been given out. I have requested just a line item multiple times to multiple people. And I have received nothing. And we continue to write checks and are taken away from the potential of either refunding or if we're short, then they're going to have to be increased. And then we're going to even be more short because we've paid out these worthy other causes. So.
I would be happy, I would be happy to go over the budget and show you current expenditures at a, at a time after this. I just don't have that material with me right at this second.
And I do want to clarify something you've said twice, that the fees were only to do paperwork. That is not correct. The fees were to run a program. And in that program also was, I don't think we ever said that we weren't going to do compliance in that program. So it was a broad spectrum program, not just to do the paperwork.
And I would, I would, sorry, I would add enforcement also.
That's not my collection, but I'm, I'm be happy to review all of that at a later time.
Okay. All right.
I'm really disappointed. I'd like you to bring us back to the item that we actually are supposed to be talking about and looking at and voting on instead of something else.
We are talking about buying a truck for code enforcement. I think we've talked this out up here. So does the public have any comments or inputs? See some movement? Okay. All right, with that, we'll come back to the Board.
Can I move to approve item 1.8?
Second.
All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Rick, I would, we have asked several times for budget material, and I would appreciate that a line item, easy to read.
Yes, we'll, we'll forward an update.
Okay, thank you. All right, I believe we've covered all of those. Onto reports and announcements, reports from department heads.
Good morning. Noah O'Neill from Behavioral Health. I just wanted to update the Board on two quick items. One is that in the past year, six months, we have realized four residents of the county who needed care above what Alpine House could offer. And we have found treatment facilities as far south as Southern California. So we have four individuals out of county, which is far higher than normal. One of the consequences of that is that our census at Alpine House is lower than normal. And since 2010, when we opened... And since 2010, when we opened Alpine House, we've only allowed Trinity County residents to reside there. But in the last, uh, two months, we made a decision to, uh, notify neighboring counties that we have this resource, and, uh, we have set a price of $56,000 per bed per year, and we are open to contracting with other counties so that they can place appropriate conserved consumers here. And of course, the county who does the placement is completely responsible for that individual, and when they leave Alpine House, they go back to their county of origin, and the contract is very clear about that. I just wanted to let you know that Sierra County has an individual that is at Willow Glen Care Center in Yup City, and seems really appropriate, and that individual will be coming to, um, Alpine House, uh, mid-December. And, uh, that contract with Sierra County will be following shortly for, for your approval. And we would, uh, also like to, um, contract out a second bed. So, this will generate about $112,000 for the department, and since in our current contract with Willow Glen Care Center, we pay for every bed every day, whether it's full or not, it certainly makes sense for the county to utilize these beds, especially if there are consumers who have that need. And I have any contact, there was a, a 12-bed boarding care home up in Paradise, and I did contact the owners up there just to make sure that if they're looking for placements for those individuals that they might consider Weaverville as an option. So, that's one update. And then the second update, I wanted to just, uh, let you know that with the No Place Like Home, um, our, um, local collaborative is certainly moving forward. You remember, we contracted with, uh, Rural Communities Development Housing Corporation out of Ukiah. They've had many successful, um, development sites across Northern California, and they're quite enthusiastic about doing a project with Trinity County. And, um, we have been working, I say we, the, um, County Administrative Office and the grant writer and, uh, TCBHS with, um, our local planning department. We've identified three, uh, county-owned properties in Weaverville that may be appropriate, and, uh, our CHDC is, uh, doing research on those properties. Uh, clearly, we would want to identify one that meets, uh, the grant requirements, uh, for Housing Development Corporation, and also that would need the least amount of remediation, and has already maybe had some environmental study work done for other purposes. So, we are, um, closing in on selecting a property, and once we have that property, uh, then the next natural step would be that the planning department will begin to work on obtaining a use permit for the, the intended apartment complex, and of course, that will be coming to your attention, uh, in the months ahead. So, those are the two areas I wanted to update you on, and thank you.
Noel, just one quick question. How, what's the average stay of somebody at the Alpine House?
Um, I would say probably about a year.
Okay.
And in our rate structure, um, we will have a daily rate, a monthly rate, and an annual rate. And so, if someone doesn't stay the full year, they would just pro-rate that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, earlier, or last month, we were notified that we won a National Merit Award in Transportation for the High Bridge Project, uh, from the Design Build Institute of America. So, I did attend the conference, which had about 2,000 people there. I was awarded the National Merit Award, and, uh, was surprised that at the end of the ceremony, we were called back up for the Special Recognition Small Project Excellence, Excellence in Projects for Small Projects in 2018. So, we also won that award, which is about 18 to 20 inches tall, weighs about 25 pounds, and, uh...
It was much more impressive.
Yeah, much more impressive. But, uh, as any good county employee would do, he handed it to consultants, said, "You take it back." So, uh, he, he saw it, and they loved it, and they said, "Well, we're going to get it engraved with some more names, uh, FHWA and Caltrans, and we'll get it back to you." I just unfortunately, by this meeting, I had not received it. But, uh, we did win two awards for the Highway Bridge Program, which was quite exciting. Uh, that project has been a very big, uh, recognized by very many as a very innovative project, and, uh, was very happy that it was as successful as it was. Onto other things, uh, yesterday, uh, working with Margaret, we signed the Brownleys for the jail. That was the last major thing that we needed to get done, so, uh, now we're waiting for the next couple of weeks for the Department of Public Works at the state to finish up their paperwork and give us notice that we're ready to proceed. Also, at the same time, I am working with Senator McGuire, uh, along with Humboldt County now, as I've heard, has joined us, and requesting more funds, uh, to construct the jail. As, as you know, right now, uh, with fires and, uh, the tariffs are, construction costs are absolutely shooting through the roof, and there's just, essentially, we're just going to need more funds to be successful at this. Uh, and hopefully, uh, the senator's cognizant of that, and it's going to help itself to make the project successful.
I have two questions, I do, um, three questions. What specific bridge project was that related to?
This is the five, uh, bridges that we replaced last summer under the Design Build.
Okay, that's right.
Um, and we were, the one, one of them, we were able to do in nine days, actually, because of the processes that we had selected to do it. And what impressed me was the fact that we used this to solve the issues that we had related to getting materials and equipment into very hard remote locations, and we looked to the contractor to help us solve that, rather than trying to design it into a solution and giving it to them.
Great. Moving on to jail, when do the bids go out, meaning it's open for bid? When is that?
I'm hoping right after Christmas, uh, holiday season is over, that we go into the bids, and I'm looking probably around the end of February to have a bid opening.
So, uh, it will go open for people to bid like right after Christmas, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we do that in February sometime?
Yeah.
We hope with construction...
Starting in April.
Oh, got it, perfect. And then on a totally different note, I'm still looking for that ladder.
Yes.
You got another question here?
Right over here, Rick. We had a conversation, uh, hopefully less than a week ago, over a week ago, about the Kenton Farm Senior Roads, and you had kind of made a commitment. Is that still something that's on your radar regarding a mile?
Yeah, post-mile one will be completely reconstructed as part of the, uh...
And your long-term was for?
Dealing with one mile per year until we get four miles, uh, completed, where we reconstruct the road between Peak and, uh, and Route Senior.
Okay, thank you for that commitment. I was, I was trying to see if you were, just to work on it a little bit, but that's why I was gentle with you.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually already memorialized that agreement.
Fantastic, thank you.
And the, uh, RMRA, uh, project selection that we did back in May, and we'll be selecting the new project again in May for the upcoming year. But, uh, most of the concentration this year will be around the, uh, Federal Land Access Pro, uh, Project, uh, Disaster Recovery, and then that one mile.
Thank, thank you for bringing that into your projects.
Okay, Rick, I have one, one more. But I will say that obviously, a safety officer didn't design that before. Careful when you, you know, above your shelf there, and it'll clunk in your head.
Put it right above your shelf, I don't know.
So, um, we've had discussion on the state's money for our general plan, um, and that we thought there was money coming, and now that there may not be. Can, can you give us, or give me, or any of the board members, uh, an action plan so we can, if, if there's something we can do to go put pressure on, on Senator McGuire, or Woods, or whoever, to, to get this moving, so we can get that money and...
Yeah, actually, I had a conversation with Jason Miles at, uh, at our meeting last week on Thursday, um, when he was with McGuire, and he pushed that we, even though the grant does say, uh, for, uh, accelerating housing, and it was really written for growing communities, he said, "Put in the grant. We, uh, we have, he feels we have an excellent chance at it. Depends on how we will write it, and we're going to look at that, but we will put in the grant for it, and, um, you know, use it to, to work on with what we have already available, to try to get something going on right."
So, please keep the board updated that we can all put pressure on whoever it might need to be to get that, because that's, you know, as you know, high priority.
Yeah, he's, he's aware of the frustration that I had when the grant came out and the way it was written, but he said, "Still move forward," so we will.
Okay, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
I have a brief update. I want to let the board know that following the last election, there was a lawsuit filed against every county in the state of California under Harrington versus, um, uh, every county in the state of California. That, that's worked its way up through the court system, up to the Supreme Court, and along the way, the court has denied it on each, uh, each L, L level. So, at this point, there's no action for the counties to take, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware, because it was published and found there. Uh, the basis of it was accepting of unsigned ballots passed 5:00 PM on November 14th. That was the, the cause of the lawsuit, but it was denied.
Okay, jury.
Good morning. I have a few things I wanted to touch base and update you on. Um, as of last week, we, there's a lot of moving parts as far as the refinancing of the, the 2005 COPs. So, um, as of last week, we submitted the last of that documentation, everything's finished on that, so I'm really happy about that. It was a pretty time-consuming. And then I also wanted to update you and make you aware, um, it's been several months I've been working with Airbnb, and they basically are an online vendor who will, um, collect, um, well, they, they host TOT, or, you know, different rentals, vacation rentals online. And so, um, at this point, legislation hasn't caught up with the collection of taxes, but we are, I'm, I'm touch base with, um, Margaret, and as far as the collection agreement for Airbnb, so that's something that's been in the works, I'm happy about that. So, we should hopefully be, um, have that wrapped up, and we're hoping by January, they'll be collecting, um, TNT for those online. And I'm still working on some of the other online vendors as well. Airbnb so far is the one that's most cooperative, because like I said, they, there's, legislation's not there yet, so they're voluntarily doing it for us, so. The other thing I wanted to touch base and update you on is our hours of operation. Um, quite a few years ago, when they were doing all the cuts, we've reduced our hours, so basically, we were open to the public from 9:00 to 1:00. And then, um, in April of this year, I attempted to open those, you know, open the hours back to four, so basically, it's extending that for another two hours. Um, we did that for about seven months, and, um, between, uh, medical and vacations and, um, just different issues that had came up, that did not work out for us, um, with the staffing. Um, I have been working with the CAO's office, um, for an item that'll be on the agenda on the 18th for another person, and working on the funding and everything for that. Um, so as of now, uh, because that didn't work out, we did reduce the hours back to 9:00 to 1:00 that we're open to the public. Um, we are still there in the afternoon, and we still answer phones and all of that, but that just, we need that piece of, that little bit of time where we can accomplish everything we need to, so.
I, was my understanding that the board had to approve any change of hours?
Uh, hours of operation are in code, correct? So, yes.
And we did, um, I did come to the board, um, when we reduced the hours, and so we didn't come back again to make a change to open it longer.
Do we need to keep coming back?
Okay. Uh, if the board has approved a reduction in the hours of operation, then no, we would not need to come back. You'd be, you increase them temporarily and then reduce them?
Mm-hmm, right. I'm hoping that if, um, depending on what the board chooses on this next agenda item, then, um, if we are, um, if we have that extra staff member, then we would return the hours back. So, I haven't done anything in addition to, as far as, um, we made notice, like as far as online and on, um, on our doors and that sort of thing, but as far as making, um, you know, putting anything in the paper or anything extra, we've not made, um, any changes, because I have an idea that's going to be coming before you on the 18th. But when I was there by myself, I didn't really have much options, so I still have to go to the bank and still have to do all those things, so that can be challenging.
Well, public service and, and helping the public is our utmost...
Absolutely.
...goal here, and, um, I would have thought you could have made it another two weeks to the 18th before you could have shut your hours down.
There was somebody on vacation, and someone was sick, and so I, um, I physically, I just don't have the staff.
So, is this, um, this medical thing kind of came out of nowhere, kind of unexpected?
I'm sorry?
The medical issue for someone in your staff, is that kind of unexpected?
Um, one, one of the items was.
Which created, um, a shortage in staffing.
Right, and then, and we do have another known, um, that's going to be more of a long-term medical that's coming up that we'll need to, um, that I know that's going to present an issue for re-staffing wise, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, I thought, and I could be remembering this wrong, um, there was a recommendation to look at possible increasing staff at mid-year. So, that's great. So, it sounds like you need something sooner.
Well, I'm hoping that the, um, because of the time with recruitment and things like that, um, if I'm coming on the 18th, and I do have, um, I believe I have some solution for funding, so it wouldn't be, I wouldn't, it wouldn't, I would not be asking for, um, any contingency dollars, so. But that was what they, uh, was suggested during budget hearings, that I come back at mid-year for an additional staff member.
I just, in, uh, in the future, for, and this is a general, for any of the department's heads, it would be very nice for the board to get a note, because we got contacted that the hours were closed before we knew anything about it, and that's not the most comfortable situation for us to be in. So, just a heads up and that sort of situation.
My apologies, I just, there's only so much we can, there's only so many hours in a day, so my apologies.
Any other question?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Any other department heads? Okay. Richard?
I have one thing to announce, uh, some actually bittersweet news. The sweet part is we've hired a, uh, new behavioral health director, Connie Sessner-Smith. She comes to us via, um, Ennio, Siskiyou, and Shasta County, from the years of experience, has a, uh, extensive background in financing the Nahuah Circuit Act and all the funding sources associated with, uh, behavioral health. The bitter part of it is the position is vacant now, because Noel has retired. So, that's why we did a recruitment and secured a new behavioral health, so she'll be starting on January 2nd.
All right, reports from the board, Supervisor Mike, say it.
No out-of-town trouble.
Supervisor Chubb.
Um, last week, I was able to join Supervisor Demores and Supervisor-elect Jamie Brown. Thank you for attending the California State Association of Counties Annual, once a year. It's always incredibly packed with, uh, motivational speakers, information on upcoming things. We, uh, vote in new leadership, and I would say that, uh, going forward in 2019, there is anticipation on so many levels of, of, um, communicating from the governor, all the way down to the board supervisors, the resiliency in the communities, the fire, uh, monies that are coming, a lot of stuff with the forest. There, there's, unfortunately, as we have experienced in our own community with tragedy, it seems to draw us stronger, and the... to draw us stronger and that circumstances brings out the best. And definitely at CSAC, many of the supervisors, including the supervisors from Butte County, were there and the camaraderie and boots-on-the-ground attitude, it was refreshing and it was an honor to be able to participate and I'd never spent any time in San Diego, so it's a beautiful facility. Once again, thank you, Jeremy. I know you went out of your way, Tina also. So, Rick Tippett was honored. He is in first position amongst the engineers. Trinity County does unbelievably well. Their people represent well. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Morse.
Yes, and Tippett, the CSAC's Board of Directors certainly had a lot of discussions on a few different topics, of course, fires in forest and preparation. We had a great field trip at the OES Center for San Diego. Of course, the one thing we're going to be having to do this year is the census is coming up again, which ultimately drives money back to counties and schools when numbers are counted properly. So, the big, the big talk, of course, is forest and the non-stop fires that continue. We will be having a forest task force meeting next week. Many of us supervisors that are in forested communities that, well, you don't have to be in forested communities anymore, that's, it's all over. We were used to be in forested communities, but now it's all over, of course. So, the big thing really out of our government and finance committee also is the budget, the surplus. We anticipate maybe some money will be diverted to some of these additional efforts, although legislation has provided some money that will roll out this year for fire prevention, fuels reduction. I think that's it. I'm sure I'm missing something.
All right. I had no out-of-country travel, but I do want to make an announcement since the federal government is shutting down for a day of mourning for President Bush 41. The TMC meeting on Wednesday, for any of those that were planning on attending, it's not going to take place, but the Thursday meeting will. So, that's all I have today. Onto the ad-hocs. Anything new out of state legislation?
Nothing too important.
From your side?
Well, as you know, we've been fielding calls of interest on SB 1459. I think staff has been handling the December 1 deadline for our license holders. We are still looking at some banking issues that haven't really, failed this last year, so I anticipate some other banking issues coming forward.
Okay. The ad hoc for commercial cannabis ordinance?
We'll see, you'll see on the agenda, the second reading of the amendments to manufacturing. Anticipate amendments of cultivation going back to the planning commission, I think, December 13th. And then, we will, I think that will wrap it up for the year. Maybe it will get back to the board before the end of the year. Hopefully, we will try our best, depending on what comes back out of the commission. And then, we will work on some of the other remaining licenses. Not too many are retail and festivals, so that's it. Unless the state changes stuff on this again, which I anticipate.
Okay. Anything to add to the new jail on Passerick's report?
Nope, nothing to add.
Okay. Will this oversight?
No, I've got nothing. Everyone's pissed at us.
Well, I would like to see something in January, at least one meeting down in your district.
Some snow, okay.
You've got tough people down there.
Yeah, just wait.
With that, we'll move on to county matters. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we're back in, back in session. The county matters, these items are non-routine, include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request an item be heard out of order. Anybody, we have one, ask for the transportation to be up first on 3-5, is at the board's pleasure.
Sure.
And...
Or do we want to just put three at the front of 3-5 since that seems quick?
Well, we'll leave that there and you'll be chair soon.
Thank you.
Just trying to be efficient.
All right. We'll start off with 3-5 if you're prepared, Rick. Receive a presentation from, a report from Director of Transportation, Rick Tippett, regarding off-highway vehicle accessibility within the National Forest Road System and the potential of requesting revisions to existing usage within Trinity County.
Actually, I'm just going to introduce the item. Couple of years back, they, when they came in with the non-motorized, or the motorized transportation plan for the National Forest, there was a issue that was raised about restrictions to off-road vehicles that were using maintenance level three and higher roads. Essentially, they were no longer allowed and it caused some disconnect to the roads in the forest. And so, the board had, at that time, asked me to go back and screen the roads and make some proposals that we'd want to forward on to the National Forest Service. We did get a grant to do that. We started to work and now the report is complete and what I wanted to do was just, it needs some, it needs an action of approval before I forward it on to the forest supervisor for their action, but I just didn't want to pop in with the report and say, "Here it is, let's take action." All right. I wanted to give it to you, have you take weeks to look it over and then at the next meeting, we will take action. So, really today, it's just to present it, give you a chance to ask some questions and then to move forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the water shed center.
I didn't know I was going to be put in the hot seat, so not ready to present, but let's do it.
Yeah, because you're the state maker.
Yeah. So, my name's Tom Evans. I work for the water shed center in Hayfork and I was, started as a part of this project back in 2016 with Leslie Hubbard and she was working in DOT and, let's see, I guess we'll start with the project background here. So, as Rick said, back in 2010, the Forest Service completed their travel management document, which closed cross-country travel to off-highway vehicles on the forest and it also closed these maintenance level three roads to off-highway travel. And so, that kind of left OHB enthusiasts with a really fragmented system of where they could use on the forest. So, then in 2012, Shasta County completed a similar project in which they worked with the Forest Service to get almost 100 miles of these maintenance level three roads brought back onto the OHB transportation system through grant funds from the state OHB commission. It's basically registration funds from OH, off-highway vehicles. So, in 2015, Trinity County, after kind of some pushback from the board supervisors at that time, back in 2012 and 2015, they finally applied for a grant to do this project. And basically, as a part of this project, we assessed all of the maintenance level three roads in the county on the Shastrean National Forest and we looked at the sightlines, the staging opportunities, camping opportunities, and by sightlines, meaning basically, how far can you see, are there blind turns, is this going to be a safe place for passenger vehicles and OHVs to be on the same road? Because basically, most of these maintenance level threes are kind of the major haul roads on the forest, the old haul roads. The maintenance level twos are generally the smaller tertiary roads that are your high clearance vehicles, only is the signed little car and the X through it. And those are legal for OHVs, so the maintenance level threes really are the ones that connect many of those and allow you to create loops and do that kind of thing. So, we went out and actually drove all the roads, looked at, you know, the safety and do they create loops and is there camping, is staging and all that kind of stuff, and we created a data set. And from that data set, we created a list of recommendations of the roads that are going to be safe and they make sense. You know, they create loops, they're staging, these roads are really going to add value for OHV users back to the transportation system and do it in a way that makes sense and it's going to be reasonable and safe and something that the forest is going to be willing to accept because the forest, you know, if the board supports this and it goes on to them, then they're going to look at it and if they don't like it, they'll just throw it out. Right? So, we tried to be comprehensive and put together something that made sense. And so, from that list of recommendations we created, we also then went out for public comment. We held three different public meetings, one in Hayfork, one here in Newville, and one up in North County. And then, I also went down and talked with the Redding Dirt Riders in Redding because they come up here a lot and ride. And then, Leslie and I both also talked to folks at the Haytown MX races in Hayfork when those were going on and tried to solicit people's feedback. And so, from the feedback and our original list of recommendations, you can find a report from the maps and that's what you guys are going to be getting. So, and if you guys support it, then it'll actually go to the forest and they can decide what they want to do with it. So, thank you for your consideration, guys. Sorry for the off-the-cuff spiel.
Oh, it's perfect and what we're looking for now. As I mentioned, really, the intent today is to give you the report and the information so that you can have more time to look it over. It does have maps, as you saw, attached to it and I'll be happy to plot maps if you so desire, just send me an email and let me know and we can get that information that goes also to the public. We'd be happy to plot something out if they want something a little larger for their particular area. But again, the information's been collected and we have a list of recommendations in the report and really today's intent was just to present it to you and allow you a little bit of time to review and ask questions if you had some. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Adam, will you make the number twos first?
All right. So, the maps are here. If the map isn't here that shows an area, say, south of the South Fork, there's no roads or being changed?
Aaron?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, so you've left out...
Basically, the assessment was only... The assessment only looked at roads on the Shasta-Ternity, so on the other side of the South Fork, on top of South Fork Mountain, changed to the Six Rivers. And we didn't assess the roads on the Six Rivers enough in the forest.
Along with, along with the areas south of the South Fork that is the Shasta-Ternity.
We did do assessments down there, yes.
Okay. Just didn't see the map. There's a forest line and forest line area is the map and it ends at 36. There's a few roads right at, right below the 36. Maybe I just need a bigger map.
There are, there are some roads further south. There's not a lot right there on that face of South Fork, just south of the South Fork because there's not a whole lot of roads in there. There's a change in road, less than a big chunk of unrode ground, but over towards the olivales, there are more road weight south.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that should all be in the map.
Keep scrolling down.
Oh, see, there's, there's a big set of maps by supervisory district and that's going to have everything way further south. This map is specific to this area because there's several high priority recommendations right in there.
Right, I know, it's the forest line area. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Morse.
I have three questions, Rick. There's still time for the public to weigh in on this and if so, how do they submit their comments?
Yes, there's always time to weigh in prior to the meeting, although we've had numerous events, there's always time up to the meeting where you provide direction. They can submit to our office to transportation planning. Polly Chapman would probably be the best person to...
Is there a link on your department website, then?
We'll make sure there's something for people to send, but they, they can comment, but it will, at this point, it would be just presented to you as a, as a comment or suggestion. We would not want to invite...
Gotcha. But just in case you want a last opportunity for us to think of something. And my second question is, remind me again, this has been after so long. What is the Forest Service intent on maintaining any of these level threes? It's just very rough.
Well, that's...
I know.
That's the, I would say million-dollar question, but I'll say it's actually 200,000. That was another question because that's what they have in maintenance. But one of the, one of the drawbacks, the biggest drawbacks to this is that they would downgrade some of the roads from maintenance level three to maintenance level two. And anytime you downgrade something, it means less maintenance, it means less care, less opportunities for monies to go to that. So, there is a risk that you would say a road that's in good condition now would be downgraded to a maintenance level two and might become worse passenger vehicle, you could pass by passenger vehicle today, might not be that way tomorrow if you downgrade. So, there is, there always is a risk when you downgrade it. The best way to do it is try to convince the Forest Service to go by mixed use, but I know that they're also very hesitant to do that from a standpoint of accident reduction and the desire to separate the off-road vehicle from mixed-use traffic or from regular recreational vehicle traffic.
Got it. Then my third question, and I know you guys have had your, you've been in the weeds on this for a long time, and now with the whole new era of non-stop fires, is there any possibility of, and maybe you didn't think of it in terms of this context, of fuel breaks around communities where these roads might serve, the roads that you recommended? Do we need to look at that with that lens?
Well, that, this would not be the right form for that. This is really meant to be looking at allowing OHVs on the roads, yes or no? The, it might be looked at from the standpoint of if they were going to downgrade, would, if that was going to serve as a fire break, they might want to have it as a higher-level service road, but that'd be a question that'd be independent of what we're requesting right now.
I just want to start to look at things that way, you know, since this has been on the books for a long time and this is...
And I appreciate that and understand and we'll make sure that we pass that comment or pass that comment on.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment to your second question? As far as some of these roads possibly can downgrade to a maintenance level two. One great thing about the state OHV commission is they annually bill out grants to do work on routes that are legal for OHVs in the state of California, so it actually gives the Forest Service more access to money for routes that are legal to OHVs than routes that aren't. So, while some of these may be downgraded to a maintenance level two, there's a decent chance that organizations like the RCD and the water shed center or the Forest Service itself will go after money to maintain them. So, they might actually stay a better state OHV legal and they might not, might not, then they might say maintenance level three, non-OHV legal.
Thank you for that.
I've got a quick, quick off-topic question. Forest Road 10 from Hayfork to Hyam Pond, is that maintenance level one? Or do you know, just off the top of your head?
It should be maintenance level four, actually. So, yeah, four is, I believe, moderate degree of comfort, so parts of that are paved. It's supposed to be a really good road, but obviously with...
Four is the top of the line.
Yeah, but with their budgets, you don't...
Okay, I'll be quiet then. I understand their budget, never mind. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys.
I would request one thing, Rick, is that each supervisor get a full map of their district.
Thank you.
So, because there's a road that I have in my mind... So, because there's a road that I have in my mind that's not, I can't see if it's open or not anymore, and so if we can all get that, then we can individually look at our districts and see if there's some other suggestions we'd like to make.
We'll have something in the office tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm giving you a hard time.
Well, quite frankly, my opinion would be that the Forest Service should open up every road to the public to travel on.
Can we vote on that?
We can vote on it.
You want a second? Third?
So, okay, let's open up to the public at this point. Public comment. All right, we'll come back and we do, or I personally, and I think the Board's hold, really appreciates this work, Forest Service, to use this as a way to keep people out of the forest and hopefully a new regime in this part of work will get us more access.
So, do you need just to...
No, this is a presentation and time to consider.
So, will this come up on the eighteenth or...
We're hoping to bring it back on the eighteenth, but if we receive a lot of comment in between now and then, we might move it on to a little bit later.
Okay, well, we look forward to it.
The grant itself ends at the end of the year, but we just need to get everything done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to three point one. Clerk of Board, waive the reading and enact an ordinance amending the Trinity County Code, Section 1.08 and deleting Section 2.04 pertaining to Board Supervisors, introduced November 6, 2018, approximately $6,057 per month for all five board members combined.
This is just the second reading, there have been no changes made between the first and the second. If the Board were to approve this, it would be published in order to that for thirty days. Again, there have been no changes made between the first and the second reading.
Okay, I will make a clarification that there was a misunderstanding in the last board meeting, it was in the paper, that this was retroactive to July 1st. It is not, it will take effect thirty days from whenever this would pass.
That is correct.
Questions?
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, anybody in the public have any comment? All right, we come back to the board. This is an ordinance, so we'll have it first.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Myers?
Yes.
Supervisor Fenley?
No.
Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Okay, on to Grants. Three point two, selection, select, propose, proposals for the forty-five advertising period pursuant to Title III Secure Rural Schools Community Self-Determination Act of 2000, up to $94,422 in Title III. Please take a moment.
The staff's recommendation is that we accept all four and give them to the public notice in forty-five days and the board will come back at that time and determine the amounts. We actually oversubscribed with the grants for ninety-four thousand, I think we have asked of around one hundred thirteen thousand, so at the end we decide, the board will decide who and how much.
So, we don't have to decide that today?
No.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, open it up to the public. All right, we come back, so just to clarify, go ahead.
I have no issue with the grant proposals in general, but what I would like to come up here is that the community wildfire protection plans were listed as part of the proposals that were submitted and that I just wanted to know if the board understands what the purpose of a community wildfire protection plan is and how it's developed. And what I would like to put before you is the, there was, the county had a fire management plan written up in 2002 by Kenneth Baldwin, Yvonne Everett, Kelly Sheen, Pat Frost, Lynn Johnworth, that's on the Fire Safety Council's website, and it's the blueprint that we should be using for community wildfire protection plans that we haven't been using. And the reason why they kind of dropped it and put it on a shelf is because the computer programming that they use to plug data in that creates a model of, to assess the risk and fire hazard for communities, we didn't have enough data to put in there to make it useful. Well, that was sixteen years ago and we have that data now. We've used that program in developing the project that's happening in Hyam Palm through the Forest Service, the South Fork Management Unit's Fire Behavior Fuel Specialists who did the program, and then they brought it to our Fire Safety Council and asked us, okay, what do you guys think with this? This is what we have based on science and the data that we have, and they crunched numbers and they showed us where the risks are highest around our valley. And so, we have that plan, we just need to dust off the dust and renew it because it's beautiful as far as I'm concerned, how we should be developing our CWPPs. The latest omnibus bill that was passed requires Forest Service to create these kind of plans in every community in the next two years, which I know won't happen, but we are developing an updated plan for 2020, and I think that we should be using this fire management plan as our blueprint in developing these plans. Because it does fall in line with that omnibus bill, it falls in line with the latest science. These are things that we can be doing and it would be beneficial to the county if we do it in that manner than what we're doing it now, which I don't, I'm not denigrating what we've been doing, I've been involved in it, and we do what we can, but, you know, the difference between the CWPP that we developed in 2015 to the one I'm seeing now using a computer program and specialists is night and day, and I think it would behoove us to do, use the best science in developing these plans. Because there's money out there, I think the county to get a new grant facilitator, we should be able to tap into some of this money to develop these plans and potential projects.
Rick Diffrid speaking as a private citizen. I did want to point out that there's a lot of places here in Trinity that there's an interface between private homeowners and the National Forest Service, and the private homeowners do take good care of their property, such as I do, was out a week in Birmingham. But we have requested several times that the Forest Service take a look at creating a plan, a faction, for cleaning up their area, particularly in areas where we have recreation, say, down at the lake, there are people that have fires and hold various activities that might not be considered fire-safe, and there's essentially a Forest Service buffer between us and the lake, and that Forest Service buffer is not maintained and has a heavy, heavy, heavy fuel load, and we've been asking the Fire Safety Council to take action on that, and we continue to request that, and we just wanted to bring that issue again so that it's understood.
Thank you. I heard a lot of topic here, but he didn't hit me, so I figured he wanted to hear it.
I was looking for Rick's off.
Okay, any other public comment? So, to clarify, this just opens this up for the forty-five days for more comment and then it comes back to us for these four projects.
And the board has the option to choose one or all at this point. You can pull one out if you want, but the board has the option to choose which ones we go off the...
Okay, so we're accepting all, we just haven't all located, how much money goes where?
Correct.
If there's a yes vote.
Yeah, and the vote would be to accept all, so we need to put that in the vote that you're accepting all the proposals.
All right, thank you. I do have a question of Tina, she may not have the answer. There seemed to be a reserve fund for this from last time, like ninety grand or something?
Suzie responded, she said she needed to do a reconciliation, I can provide that to you at a later date.
All right.
But she believes there was a, in the last round of funding, a search and rescue activity performed on federal land was set aside.
Okay, and maybe that's just that narrow, that's only for that, but it doesn't affect us today, I just wanted to know, there was something out there.
All right. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
I'm assuming we're accepting all of them as presented.
That was the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Clarification. You got it. Three point three, approve the in-home Forest Service public authority rate change from $12.36 to $13.44. The hourly wage will be $12.50 with payroll taxes at 78 cents and administrative cost at 16 cents per hour effective January 1st, 19. No impact to the general fund, revenue from the California Department of Social Services.
Good morning, Michael Cattone, I'm Program Manager for Adult Services with Health and Human Services. I'm here appearing on behalf of Lady Goerzer. I'm also joined by my colleague Georgia Salmon, who's with our fiscal here, answering a question she might have about this.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
I have a quick question. Michael, remind me again how much, if any, the state picks up with this?
Well, this is actually, allows us to pull down a state calculation.
Okay.
And this is based on time studies that are staffed to complete documenting how many hours they spend, so it's a function of staff time and the paid hours that are paid out for access services in the community.
Right, thank you.
And I just want to do, the payroll taxes are only 78 cents, that's an accurate number?
Right.
Yes, yes, those numbers are accurate. It's based on a state-approved worksheet that is part of the backup.
I just wish I had to pay only 78 cents.
Can be arranged.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
All right, any public comment? No, we come back to the board.
Motion to approve three dot three Health and Human Services as presented.
A second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right, thank you. Planning and zoning, waive the reading and enact an ordinance which amends the Trinity County zoning ordinance 315 by amending Section 43.2 regarding cannabis manufacturing, introduced November 6, 18, fiscal impact unknown. Supervisor Myers refusing.
I'm just introducing that it's the second reading of what we discussed in November, no changes, I don't believe we made, so it is what we discussed in November. So, these are the amendments to the longstanding manufacturing ordinance, working with type six shared-use facility. Leslie, do you have anything that you feel we need to clarify more?
I don't think so, there was one tiny change in it. Supervisor Chadwick requested kind of a reformatting to make clearer the areas where it's not allowed, anything to worry about it?
Thank you. Other than that?
Okay, any questions for Steph?
Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
This is sort of a very complicated thing when I read it, I don't understand a lot of it, but I do understand that you still have the felony clause in there, not the sanity clause, but the felony clause. I would like to suggest that you take that out if it's relevant, but I do get concerned about certain people dealing with stuff you ingest, and I worry a lot about cookeries going on in my own neighborhood or butanes being used, and so, sort of allowing crooks in on this is not a good idea.
Okay, anybody else? Would you like to comment back on that or?
Well, I just, you know, it's not just our ordinance that is in play here, it's the state regulations that public health will get involved in and those products that are ingested. They have some quite strict guidelines and regulations on those type of products. If I'm not mistaken, you know, again, the felony is a certain narrow definition of the felony, it's nonviolent, it's usually related to marijuana cultivation. The state is reversing many of those convictions. I think they've even, in their last revision, they've made some, even streamlined that process. If you have a felony conviction on cultivation, to remove that from the record, most states are doing that, so this is, if you've robbed a bank, you are not entitled to apply to most cannabis licenses, those type levels of felonies. Do I have that right, Margaret? I think you'd like to add that I've, no? So, I think those were the two. There's various levels of manufacturing. Those that are perceived as, you know, more volatile are certainly restricted, there's certain zones and not in neighborhoods. All require, I think all require a CUP, or is it, there's a director's use permit for the more, not quite as involved manufacturing.
Or mechanical methods.
Or mechanical methods. So, we certainly have tried to do this in phases and levels in the degree of complication, risk, et cetera. Do you understand anything?
I have a question. This is regarding Section 4, every Ford, number I, letter I. It does date specific felonies, and if the state of California changes those, will ours still be in effect or we're not really referencing any state code?
I think overall we...
As it changes? If the state decides to change?
The goal is to have, as the state changes, not have to come back and...
I know that, and is there, I don't see a reference to the state code in there necessarily.
And no, my understanding is ours, ours would supersede these states on our county license.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, unless we state otherwise. But again, the intent through all these ordinances is to try to, where we're tying it directly to the state regulations and not developing our own, is to have them be able to change with the state. As we develop our own regulations that differ from what the state is doing and potentially doing so, those will remain even if the state changes.
So, to answer your question, this would remain?
I understand that, so there's a possibility that if the state removes Schedule II felony, we will still go under Schedule II felony and most likely be litigated, possibly, well, possibly be litigated? Go for it.
Yes, we can be litigated all the time, so...
No.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
So moved. A second.
And that's passing three point four as... Who's it?
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Fenley?
Yes.
Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Okay, somebody could go, tell Perry, he's... All right, unless I'm missing something, we are at closed session. Closed session with four point one, Government Code, Section 54954.5, Conference with Legal Counseling Existing Litigation, Ware versus White, Trinity County Superior Perp Case 17, CD 0... Counsel Existing Litigation, Ware versus White, Trinity Superior, Perp Case 17CB091. Four point two, Government Code, Section 54954.5, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. Thank you, everybody, for coming today. Closing out a closed session, both items were information items and no actions taken.